This time I'll call the August 16th, 2021 Council Meeting to Order. The Honorable Joel Hamilton from District 7 will lead us in invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for the blessing of our safe and prosperous community. As we witness a corner of the world descend into violence and chaos, we're even more grateful to be blessed with the stability that we take for granted. Lord, we pray for the brave men and women in uniform who risk their lives on a daily basis to provide us that security. And as we go about our business tonight, I pray that you will give us the wisdom to make the most of your blessings and to pass them on to our children. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if the following individuals would come forward for the oath of office, Ed Stewart, York County Cultural and Heritage Commission, District 2; Flint Holbrook, Stormwater Appeals Board; Sandra Calhoun White, Catawba Mental Health Board; Matt Burrell, York County Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, the at-large seat; and Andrew Jones, York County Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, District 1. As you make your way forward, on behalf of the council, I do want to say thank you so much for your willingness to serve on these committees. You do so without pay and a lot of times without recognition. It's a lot of your time away from your family. We do appreciate what you do for our community.
with York County. I'm going to turn it over to George Willmore, who is his supervisor, who will come forward and speak a few words for him.
Thank you, Chair Person. Thank you, County Attorney, Assistant County Manager. We thank you all for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to congratulate Mark on his retirement, reaching the time, and it's a huge accomplishment. And may you enjoy your freedom to do whatever you like to do in the coming years. Your dedication and commitment have not gone unnoticed. We have been an asset to our team, Mark. I have enjoyed working with you, and I wish you the best in your retirement. You will be missed again. Congratulations, and the best wishes to you and the new start of your journey. I enjoy working with you. Wish you would stay. I enjoyed you. Thank you.
On behalf of the council, I do want to present you with the clock, which recognizes you and your dates of service with the county. And we want to hand this to you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You can say a few words if you'd like to, or if you're good.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. I asked him if he had a few words he wanted to say, and he said he was good. So, we appreciate that. At this time, I'll recognize Neil Brennan to provide the Lake Wiley Marine Commission annual report.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the council. I've been asked to give you the Reader's Digest and Nuts version tonight, so I'll do my best to do that. I'm Neil Brennan, Executive Director of the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. I guess I got to figure out how to work this one. Please don't start my clock yet. Ms. Brennan? Apparently, the ON OFS switch was in the OFS position. My name is Neil Brennan, the Executive Director of the Lake Wiley Marine Commission. Our mission hasn't changed. We're here to provide, promote, protect, and preserve Lake Wiley. There are several key focus areas that I'd like to address tonight: safety, law enforcement, education, and environment pollution. We'll talk about that last one quite a bit. Safety, we do provide flotation devices to the police, all the agencies that police the lake, so that if they come across somebody that doesn't have the right little size for their child, they can give them one rather than have to go off the lake. We just spent about $2,000 refurbishing those life jackets for all the agencies. We monitor and notify the North Carolina and South Carolina any danger buoys that are out of place. We don't touch danger buoys, but we do have something to do with no-wake buoys. In North Carolina, we are charged not only to forward and screen requests for both states to the respective agencies, but also in North Carolina to maintain them. You all take care of the danger and no-wake buoys in South Carolina. We also support law enforcement. Recently, we provided York County Sheriff's Office with a water rescue training dummy and some other equipment to go along with that, so they enhance their training. The boathouse for Gaston County is pretty close to getting that fur priment out to the folks that need to review it finally. They've been going back and forth with that thing for about two years now. I think I briefed you on that two years ago. As far as education is concerned, we had a slot on the Catawba Water Management Group's Citizens' Water Academy, a little 15-minute spiel to tell them what we do on Lake Wiley Marine Commission. We also have on our website a presentation you might be interested in, is "Why is Lake Wiley So Brown?" Dave Ferguson of the Land Use Services, Environmental Services Agency over there answered the question for us. We thought he did such a good job, we put it on our website. We also have put the PSAs out, Public Service Announcements regarding any new wake zones. And we also get... Oh, I'm sorry. Back up there. We participated this year in the Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation's River Fest. The boat show this past year has been canceled because of COVID virus. So, we did manage to get out to the River Fest, and I provided each of y'all with copies of the information that we provide for people to take a look at there. You can look at that at your leisure, but that's kind of some of the things we put out and help to educate people with. The water quality, another area where we get reports, and you can see that even though Mecklenburg does this, they have some slots down south in the lake that we pay attention to. Now, the latest wolf closest to the sled, if you will, is the cyanobacteria virus that has popped up in Boyd's Cove, which is over Mecklenburg, straight across from River Hills Estates. They've asked us, curiously enough, to form patrols, to go out and monitor that area and shoo people away, because they can't get enough information out quickly enough. They've been out door-to-door, but they haven't gotten everybody, because I was out on Saturday for about three hours. Some of the people knew about it, not everybody did. A couple of folks were in swimming, said, "Do you know?" No. They hopped out of the water pretty quickly, and so on. So, we have a Zoom call tomorrow with several agencies, Coast Guard, power squadrons, police agencies, what have you, to set up a rotating patrol, so we can go out and help get the word out to these people about this cyanobacteria that's rampant in that cove. They started out with one little plume, now they've got 11. They're hoping to contain it over there, but if it gets loose, it could come on downstream. So, there you go. We did participate in river sweeping, unlike past years where we ran the whole show. We joined forces with the Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation, and you can see the amount of debris that we were able to pull out there. Some shots of the people who helped out and the stuff that they got. This one chose one of our Lake Wiley Marine Commissioners from South Carolina, Ray Weber. He was out with his boat, helping out, helping the cause. And we also are able to get some of the people in kayaks to get back in some of the reaches where you can't get with a regular boat. We're involved with the environmental control of hydrola. Last couple of years, we haven't had any. Haven't had the need to put in this sterile carp. Well, it's raised its ugly head again. And the good folks over at Duke are going to have a survey here next, this month, to see how bad it is, and it looks like we'll be in the carp business again here come fall. There's another one called alligator weed, and this is on South Fork. That is not cranberry cat patch that you'll get now. This is an invasive species, and the only way to get rid of it is with these bugs called thriffs. And Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation and Duke have joined forces to put these out. We're ready to assist with funds or whatever they need whenever they need it, but this is another thing that we monitor and help out where we need to. Along with the Environment and Clean Marina Program, I think I briefed you a couple of years ago, South Carolina has a good program that the marina owners have to pay for and send their representatives to training for. None has signed up. So, we fill the gap. We go around the marinas on Lake Wiley in South Carolina, investigate for the same things that are done at most of these environmental programs for clean marinas, and award them that pretty beautiful flag there they can fly if they meet those criteria. The sedimentation is a cancer on the lake. This is a big area that we have been concerned with for many years. We're fighting the battle to help Gaston County enhance their stormwater control measures as you folks did the last couple of years. I applaud your decision to use high-hazard silt fences everywhere, the little flimsy ones that fall down all over the place. They're the minimum requirement and what has been accepted in Gaston County, and we're coaching them to bring them back up to speed. We had a boat tour a couple of months back in April, where we invited some of the folks from Mecklenburg to join the Gaston County officials, talked about this, ended up with Mr. Rusty Rozell, whom you may know. He's the water control czar, if you will, over in Mecklenburg County, to come and share some of the things that they do, not with the idea of you've got to do it this way, but rather, here's what we do, and you might be, we're willing to help you. So, along those lines, he also presented to the Belmont City Council, and we were able to achieve some of these enhanced stormwater controls, larger sediment basins, continuous automated monitoring device for measuring the turbidity at the outfall of these sediment basins. So, you've got a system down there where if a parameter's tripped, this monitor, it could be turbidity, high pH, whatever it is, high turbidity indicates sedimentation. Well, let's get this signal sent to somebody's cellphone, so they can go down and check it out. We also had them put shut-off valves on those outfalls, so that if the signal is received, somebody can go down and shut the valve, check it out, and see what's going on. Sounds like common sense to me. We're inviting this to the attention of everyone to see if they choose to do that, to help the sedimentation build up in the lake. Now, what we didn't get, we also got some post erosion control measures, post-construction, to give some better sedimentation basins, okay? But we didn't get these bathymetric surveys. You're familiar with Torrance Creek washout of a couple of years ago, where one of the developments over there spilled the water from North Carolina into the South Carolina Torrance Creek. They had to pay a healthy fine for that, and when the residents sued to have it cleaned up, they didn't win, because they didn't have standing. Well, if they'd had a bathymetric survey, which is nothing more than bottom mapping, perhaps they may have. Hey, here's what the bottom looked at when we started, and here's how you guys silted it up. Here's the delta. Maybe you ought to clean up the delta. Don't know if that would fly, but it's a tool that can be used to offset things like the Torrance Creek Matt Me home, the D.R. Horton thing down on Bottom Road a couple of years ago, and so on. The other thing we've done is joined the South Fork River Health Committee. A lot of the sedimentation that's coming down the South Fork that's silted up fairly well to where part of that river is no longer navigable. I was up there the other day, and some of the danger buoys, you can't even get close to the danger buoys anymore, because there's so much silt there. They're looking at how we can improve sedimentation control in the higher, all the river, not just in Council County, but in the counties north of there. So, that's what we're about. Those are some of the things we've been doing, and happy to entertain any questions about this.
Yeah. Thank you, first of all, for this information. Appreciate it. When it comes to the bacteria issue that you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, how is that monitored? You said you're meeting tomorrow, so the advisory then will continue to go out on a daily basis of where we're at with that?
I don't know the answer to how frequently they do that. I was told that they are going to be monitoring today, that they being the Mecklenburg County Water Control folks, okay? They asked me, because they know I've got the ability to contact some of the people who come to our meetings, to say, "Hey, can you come help us?" Well, Lake Wiley Marine Commission picked up the slack for Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we canceled because of the rain. Tuesday, I'll go out and wave the flag, and I think I gave you a copy of the warning sign. Did that get printed out, by the way, Ms. Brennan? The warning sign and a little flyer that we give to folks, saying, "Hey, this is what this stuff is all about." And as I say, it turned away several people on Friday, some of which you didn't know, and many of, many of which didn't know, three of which did. So, we just said, "Hey." And one guy was in swimming. I said, "Do you know about the fact of water here?" He scrambled out of the water and said, "No. What's that all about?" So, it is a concern how frequently they will sample. I'll find out for you, sir. I'll get back to you, to the chair, and Ms. Brennan, I'll let you know. How long are we going to have to keep these patrols up? I don't know. What we've suggested, they get one of these big blow-up buoys, and that you can put a sign on that says, "Hey, stay out of the water, no swim," whatever. They being, Mecklenburg County is investigating that. We're going to look into buying one for ourselves, too, so we can help out if the need arises. But I owe you an answer on how frequently I'll find out.
Yeah. And the concern of the spread, obviously. The concern of the spread, and to make sure that, right?
Right. Right now, it's contained, according to Mr. Rozell, in that cove. Now, it started out with one spot, and some of the residents says, "Yeah, we heard about it. It's just that one spot over there." I said, "No, you didn't read the latest. The latest is it's 11 spots." So, the thing is, and it's a naturally occurring thing, it may have been prompted by some runoff somewhere. They don't know that. He said, "Well, when cold weather comes, it'll go away." But that's a ways away. So, I don't know how long we're going to have to keep those patrols up, or whether they're going to be able to get some buoys out there to alleviate the need for patrols. I'll find out.
Okay. We'll look out for your updates. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
How you doing, ma'am?
I'm just curious about the lake level. I know y'all are trying to figure it out. But we've had a ton of rain in the last couple of days, but the water dropped just dramatically. I wonder if the bacteria, does that not come more out of that cove when they open the dam and let that water? It seems like that would pull that out of that cove.
Again, I don't know the science behind that, but I understand water flow, and that's how, that could certainly, if you get a heavy flow out there, could tend to suck some of that water out of that cove, I reckon. So, again, we'll find out if that's going to cause this stuff to move.
I get a lot of complaints about lake level, and it's...
And Duke presented at our meeting last week, I'm sorry, last month, the July meeting, that they will have to maintain lake level at below their normal target level for three years to accommodate significant construction down by the Lake Wiley Dam. A big park complex, a ranger station, it's a big deal down there, but in order for them to work on the dam and that complex, they have to keep the water level low to maintain an inventory upstream. It all kind of balances out, and they have to manage the entire system. I was able to get my boat off the lift the other day to go out and monitor this cove. If it goes down any lower, I may have to ask some of my compadres to use their boats that are maybe more readily available. But that's why it's so low, and why it's going to be low for a while.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Brennan. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Patrick Hamilton to provide the council with a Pennies for Progress update.
All right. Good evening. It's been a few months since I've updated you. I also want to provide a good update this evening and have some good news here and there to present to you. So, like always, we'll start with projects under construction. Again, I'm not going to touch on every single one of our projects, but if there's an individual one you want more information about, I'd be happy to answer. I'll start with Highway 274, Pole Branch Road in Lake Wiley. You can see this is the new five-lane bridge being built over Lake Wiley on 274. We do expect this bridge to be completed by the end of the year in December. So, you can see on the northern part of the screen there that the asphalt on the right side, they've come down to about as far as they can with the asphalt towards the bridge. They can't go all the way down. Obviously, there's still some prep work to do there to tie into the bridge, but the contractor is basically doing everything he can, as close as he can, to the bridge to keep the project moving. Shifting over to Pole Branch Road, the left side is where the old bridge used to be. It's been torn down. The majority of the new bridge has been built. As you can see there, they still have to widen it out a little bit more, but they had to tear down the existing bridge first before they could do that. So, that's expected to be completed around December as well. This is on the far end of the project, at the kind of top of the screen, is heading into North Carolina. So, you can see on the left side sidewalk, curb and gutter, all that's been done. The road's been shifted a little bit there, so they just got to come back in, and most of the storm drains already been put in, a little bit more storm drain work, and then the curb and sidewalk can go in after that. So, overall, this summer and spring and summer, they've made a good bit of progress out there. We've been pleased with it. Still, a little bit more work to do, but we do hope to be doing the final asphalt throughout the job in the spring of 2022. Gold Hill I-77 interchange. So, this project's coming along pretty well. Still on pace to be completed, I think, in November of this year, possibly October. There is a weekend closing coming up, the weekend of September 10th, where they're going to close off the bridge. So, you'll be able to access the ramps on and off the interstate, but you cannot cross the interstate on Gold Hill Road. Once that weekend closing happens, that Monday morning, September 13th, when it opens back up, the diverging diamond configuration will be in effect. So, we'll try to get up with Trish and put out some information about that on social media. So, once that shift happens, then it's just a matter of getting all the final asphalt and all the finishing touches on the project. But that's an important thing to note, that the crossover pattern will go into effect on that Monday morning. Again, that's what I just mentioned there about the interchange being closed the weekend of September 10th.
Yeah. I got a quick question on that, Patrick. First of all, thanks for the information that's been out. We've been pushing it out to the public. The question I have is that the diversion, where they're diverting it, how is there... That's going to be a lot of traffic going elsewhere throughout that. Is there going to be additional signage, stuff being put out to make sure it's very clearly defined?
Certainly. They have message boards the contractor will be putting up near our project to alert folks, new traffic pattern, or let them know about the closing, and then also letting them know that the new traffic pattern will be in effect that following Monday.
Okay. So, there'll be signage around the whole area?
Message boards, correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Galleria Boulevard. So, this is a Pennies for project that was included in the Cell River widening project. This portion, we designed quicker and went ahead and bid it out prior to the main widening of Cell River. This is, bottom of the screen, that's Cell River Road where Waterford Park comes in. So, as you can see, making that connection there, there was a tremendous amount of earthwork on this project. You can see that they've leveled it out, for the most part, here already. All the clearing's been done, all the grading. Flipping over to the other side of the project, you can see the existing Galleria Boulevard down there at the bottom, where we'll be tying into. There's a creek crossing there in the middle, if you can see kind of the silt fence outlines that creek crossing, that they'll be putting that cove in this fall. So, overall, this project just started a few months, a month or two back, and on track to be opened up to traffic next summer. The Spratt Fort Mill Parkway intersection, it's a brand-new alignment, so we're going to be shifting the parkway to the right there. You can see where it was cleared through the woods there, the Fort Mill wastewater treatment plant there on the right, and you can see the Lennar side in the background being cleared as well. This project, again, just started this summer, so probably looking at next fall for it to be open to traffic. US 321 Kings Mountain Road. Mr. Winkler, this is in your ballpark.
I drive through it every day.
That's right. So, this is a before picture. This is a Pennies for project. City of York was one of their top projects on Pennies for referendum. So, you can see the existing layout of the intersection, kind of a skewed intersection. So, to the north is 321, and to the left, if you come to the bottom of the picture, that's Kings Mountain Street. So, kind of a scissor-type intersection skewed, a lot of yielding, and some people can be confused on which way to go. Anyway, so we've gone in and completely realigned the intersection, bringing Kings Mountain into a T-intersection with 321. This was a very successful project. Contract completion date was September 11th. They achieved substantial completion on July 28th, and we just started this project, I think, back in April. The bid amount we received was 1.65 million, and we should be a little under a million when it's all said and done. We still have an invoice or two to process, thus in approximate, so about $700,000 under the bid amount. And yes, that's such a large amount for such a smaller bid item, but the main issue on this one, which benefited the cost and the completion date, was there was some water and sewer work that was anticipated to be done, and once we got out there in the field, we realized the water and sewer lines were lower than anticipated, so we didn't have to relocate them. That was several hundred thousand dollars worth of work that did not have to be done. So, from a timing standpoint, a schedule standpoint, that was a huge benefit. So, it goes to show you that there are good projects out there that come in under budget and ahead of schedule, but a lot of these projects revolve around utility impacts and utility delays, and this project didn't have those, so the contractor was able to get in there, do the work, get what they needed to get done, and you can see the finished product here.
Is that why they did some of the lower subsurface paving, and they came back out and cut some sections out to be able to tie into some of that? Because I noticed, as I drive it, it's between my house and my office. I drive it every day, and they did some of the base paving, and they came back and cut some sections out, and they were redoing some stuff.
That was either utilities, or I know there were a couple of cross-line pipes that they had to install as well. But yeah, again, just having those lack of conflicts lets the contractor be able to take off and do the work much, much quicker. Take a look at some upcoming projects. So, again, Mr. Winkler's in your area of town. I don't talk about gravel roads a lot, but DeVeni Road is probably the most heavily-traveled gravel road in the county.
Been a long time coming.
Yep. It's been a long time coming, indeed. So, we've had the bid, we've had the pre-con. Contractor was wanting to start this week, but with the heavy rain coming in today and tomorrow and possibly Wednesday, they pushed it back a week, so we do expect them to start construction next Monday. We will be closing that road completely to traffic, so they can, again, there's a lot of clearing, a lot of earthwork needs to be done on this project, so trying to maintain traffic and do that at the same time would be difficult. So, that one, it's a 90-day contract, so we hope to have that opened up before Thanksgiving. Huber Graham Way Extension, the bid award is already approved this evening, or, excuse me, it is on the consent agenda tonight to be approved, so hopefully we'll get that approval. We can set up a pre-construction meeting with the contractor in the next couple of weeks and have construction start in September on that project. There's a handful of projects here where we're in the final plans, in the utility agreement stage. I know Mr. Goffey and Aldette, y'all are somewhat new to council, so with the utility agreements on our projects, we pay for all utilities, no matter if they have prior rights or not. We do not pay for betterments or upgrades, but on every project, we have to have utility agreements with Comporium, Duke, all the providers, to reimburse them for their work. So, US 321 Johnson Railroad, just down the road here in York, 160E. So US 321 Johnson Railroad, just down the road here in York, 160 East, Riverview, 557, all those are in that final plans utility agreement stage. And so there's a handful that should be going to bid, hopefully by the end of the year. Pennies for resurfacing. So I know Chairman Cox, you presented back in June, I believe, to the Rock Hill, whatever Rock Hill Day that was about the Pennies for resurfacing, so I wanted to give the rest of council the full update. As you know, there was $50 million approved on Pennies for referendum for resurfacing that totaled about 80 miles' worth. All the roads will be complete this fall. In fact, there's only about two or three roads that are outstanding that are to be finishing up, hopefully, in the next month or so. This was a huge accomplishment for us. First time resurfacing had been on a referendum before. The good thing about resurfacing is there's no right-of-way acquisition, there's no utility relocations, there's no really design that needs to be done, things that can get going much quicker. Based on that $50 million, we expect to be at least $6 million under budget. There's still projects that need to be closed out, so we may end up -- possibly that number may end up increasing, which will then just get passed out to other Pennies for projects. So there was two big things that happened to allow us to be so successful with the resurfacing program. One is coordination with SC DOT. So, you know, 95% of these roads were on state roads, which means we have an agreement with them where we basically send them the money, and they bid it and pave it and manage it, and then send us back whatever money's left. So going back to 2017, prior to the referendum being voted on, so the referendum was voted on July, excuse me, November 2017, well, that summer in July, we went ahead and coordinated with the DOT and sent them a list of $10 million worth of roads and said, hey, can y'all help us out and go ahead and start working this bid package up? So if the referendum's approved in November, you can go ahead and put it out to bid, and we can start working the spring. So they said, yeah, sure, you know, y'all have approved the last three referendums pretty successfully, you know, we're optimistic and confident Pennies for will approve. So they took $10 million worth of roads, two different bids, worked up all the quantities, all the prep work, the bid packages, so when it was approved in November, they were ready to program it within their system so it would be advertised for bid over the winter. So we had both bids advertised over winter and awarded in the spring, and construction started prior to May of 2018, which is when the tax began collecting. So we had projects on the street before the tax even began collecting. Which brings me to my next point, was we had to receive a loan from council to be able to do that work. So thanks to the council who allowed us to, you know, front that money to be able to send to DOT so they could get started on that work immediately prior to the tax even begin collecting. So all of that led to the success that we had on the resurfacing program for Pennies for.
So we only had $10 million and saved $6 million?
No, the $10 million was just the initial roads we sent to DOT.
Oh, okay.
We bid the roads out over four years. We couldn't bid everything at once. We would flood the market and not enough contractors. So just that initial bidding, which we sent approximately $10 million worth of roads to DOT that they bid out that winter. And then the next winter, we sent them 10 more, 10 million, you know, every year, we'd send them a significant list of roads to bid out.
Okay.
Patrick, real quick. Sutton Road, I know that it was somewhat delayed because of concrete or access to concrete, so I pushed it out. Do you have any possible update on that?
I do not, but I can follow up that on the morning. That was a C-Fund road that we sent to DOT to bid. They were doing a section of Sutton Road, and C-Funds was doing the adjacent section of Sutton Road, so they kind of combined it all into one project. I do know there has, in general, been a cement shortage amongst the construction industry, but I can follow up in the morning on Sutton Road, because I believe it was supposed to start, I think, in August.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
The latest update that was.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks.
I'll see what I can find out on that.
All right, thanks.
Moving on to the Pennies for revenue, so as I spoke to y'all last time, revenue is still coming in at a high rate. Looking back to November, December, January, was up over 14% compared to that same time period from 2019, 2020. That's Christmas time, so that's always generally a high check, but to be up that much year over year is impressive. Next one is March, April, May. This one's a little deceiving. It was up 33% compared to 2020, but 2020, that was when the pandemic started, so that was a dip in revenue. Also, there was another round of stimulus sent out in March, so that was, you know, a lot of money being thrown into the economy. So we do expect maybe to level off some now that the stimulus packages appear to be over. One thing I will mention, I was reading the article in the Herald about the census data, York County's grown 25% in the last 10 years, so that's could be another reason that our revenues have been, you know, a good bit higher lately. But, you know, we're appreciative of it and we're full steam ahead. So I do want to point out, we are less than halfway through the collection period, so we're off to a great start now, but there's still, you know, a lot of uncertainty. Things can continue to go on great, or, you know, I don't know if there's going to be any type of potential market bust or anything of that sort, but we are trying to monitor that closely as we continue through the collection period for Pennies for. Kevin, was there anything you were going to add on that? I saw you a little eager over there.
I was just going to point out that a lot of the stimulus funding coming in, there's a lot more spending going on, I think everybody's aware of that. A lot more money getting dumped in the economy is going to lead to inflation. That's the other side of the equation. Our revenue coming in has been strong, but concerns about what the expenses are going to be in the future on those projects. The budget to date has been great, but there are concerns about how those budgets are going to be in the future.
Good point. So I did want to give a couple of updates on the SIB project. As you know, Exit 85 and 82 were approved by the SIB board. Exit 85, Highway 160 was already an active project. I spoke with DOT this week about that. They're looking to start right-of-way acquisition in September. We are doing a little bit of coordination with them. Their project, the interchange project, but it also includes widening Highway 160 to six lanes from Pleasant Road all the way to US 21, which is about a mile stretch. We do have a Pennies for project that ties into that 21 end. We're doing a little bit of coordinating with them on that one. But they do anticipate starting right-of-way acquisition in September. Exit 82, ABNC, was also approved through the SIB. The DOT has selected a consultant on that project, so they are negotiating that fee at the moment to begin the alternatives analysis and a preliminary design. So I will continue to keep you all informed of these two projects as I receive updates from DOT. And the Exit 85-160 interchange here is a rendering. This does not include the six-lane widening, this is just the interchange portion. So it's a pretty innovative idea, or excuse me, innovative design. You can see there's two new bridges crossing over I-77. Not going to go through every turning movement, but essentially, whether you're coming from TK or Fort Mill or heading north or south, you make a right to get on the interstate. You don't have to turn left or try to cross traffic to get onto the interstate. So that should help the peak hours in the morning and evening, especially the morning getting on the interstate. So you can take a look at that and try to follow the roads as they go, but very innovative design. Good news is, it's mostly being able to be built within the existing right-of-way and footprint of I-77, so, you know, hopefully, construction starts in the next couple of years. So that wraps up my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Any other questions from council? I know I speak on behalf of the entire council, and I say it is exciting to know that we have done 80 miles of paving under budget, $6 million under budget in four years. That's a huge accomplishment, and it's been done because we've used our reserves in a very important way that helped us get that done. That's something that the people I know are very excited about. Thank you for what you've done.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any chance that the Sutton Road construction could overlap with construction with widening 160 out that way for the Exit 85 improvement as well, or will Sutton Road be done before that starts?
Which section of Sutton Road?
The section right near, the section of Sutton Road that's being repaid?
Repaid?
Yes.
So that's on the northern, near the Baxter section?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that should, in theory, be done this year, if not in the spring. So yeah, that'll be done well before the interchange work starts.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And one other note on the resurfacing. In addition to the things I've already mentioned, we did have our York County Public Works in-house paving crew pave a couple of the roads too, so that was able to save some budget versus being able to bid it out. They had a milling machine and paving operations, so we've been able to utilize them as well to add to the savings.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
At this time, we move to the public forum session of our agenda. Just to remind the public, this is an opportunity for individuals to come forward. You're limited in two minutes in time to address the council. This is not an opportunity to ask council any questions, so if you sit there and you ask a question, we don't answer those questions, so we don't want to appear rude, but we do want to make sure that we hear from the public. This was originally designed to allow individuals to come speak on something that was on the agenda. That did not allow a public hearing, so that was the purpose of this, but we allow, in the form of transparency, we allow anyone who shows up at council and gets here in order to do that, to speak. The one thing I cannot stand about my job is to interrupt someone at the two-minute mark. It's, I guess, my southern training, it just makes me cringe when I have to do it, but I do it because it's my job. So if you'll please make sure when you're making your comments to look up at the screen, and when you see it start blinking, that means your two minutes is up, and if you can wrap your comments up so I don't have to stop you, that makes me not have to do that part. When you come forward, if you would please state your name and give your address. Oh, and one other comment. If there is an item that is a public hearing item, I want you to understand, if you want to wait until the public hearing matter, you're not limited in your time. You can speak as long as you want if it's a public hearing item. So if you would prefer just to wait until the public hearing, if you're here for a public hearing issue, if you'll just let me know when I call your name, and we'll just make sure that you have that opportunity to speak at the public hearing session. First name on the list, Carrie Bishop.
Hello, Carrie Bishop, 1851 Bonner Drive, Rock Hill, 29730. So I wanted to just talk about the new Indy Paper Mill and Kataba. I think we all know that they're poisoning us. York County gives them a very generous tax deal to bring business here. In the agreement, it states that it was for the general welfare of the public, but what they have done in turn is turned around and poisoned 1.5 million people with dangerous toxic air emissions and groundwater contamination. They had no intention of being a good neighbor. Their lawsuit with Resolute Forest Products and the VCOC and Espero money shows that. And they are refusing to upgrade their equipment, even though they get this generous tax deal, and they should be able to afford to do so. Instead of upgrading the equipment to treat the contaminants, they want to recondition the trim condenser in hopes that it upgrades the equipment, but they won't know till it's back, and it's been out for two months. So their current equipment handles half. We need it to handle all, and I don't feel that they should have a tax FLO until they do something about it. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. I believe it says Karen Riley.
Good evening, and I'm sure I'll go over, so I apologize. I'm emotional, I have nothing prepared, but I just stand up here, and I just hope you see me as a human and a mother who is terrified for my life and my kid's life and my family because of these fumes. The last seven months have been the worst, the last couple of months have been the worst months of my life. I have a humidifier, purifier in my room, I run it full blast. I've had to leave my home and escape the fumes because I'm so sick with dizziness and sore throat and burning eyes. My eyes have been burning all day, these fumes have been relentless. We are scared. There are thousands of us across four counties who are terrified. We are on the verge of putting our homes up for sale. We're working with a Realtor right now to move out of York County. We don't want to do that. We love it here, we love Fort Mill, but I am scared to death for my family and my health. And I just want you to hear me and understand how many of us are terrified with nosebleeds, dizziness. It's relentless. It feels like a chemical attack that we cannot escape from. These fumes come in our home. At night, I have a gas mask that I wear to sleep at night. This should not be happening in Fort Mill. This should not be happening, this wonderful, family-friendly, beautiful place in York County that we have loved for 12 years. I can't believe this is happening. This has been a nightmare, and I just want you to see me and hear me tonight. Please partner with us to stop these fumes, to restore quality of life in Fort Mill and York County. This can't be good for our county, for any of us, for South Carolina. I know that this is not why you invited this company in, to destroy our lives. I just thank you for your service to York County.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. If you could, just confirm your address was 119 Edge Hill. Thank you, ma'am. Tom Flanagan?
I'll, please, if I have time, to follow up with you.
Yes, sir. Miriam Morrison?
I will do the public hearing for case number 2112.
Okay, when I call that, you'll have your opportunity to speak then. Yes, ma'am. Antonio Ward?
I will please speak up.
Okay. Bryce Cox? So there's no comment, okay. At this time, do we have a motion on consent agenda? And just so that the individual making a motion, if there's no one who wants to take out item number 24, there's a typo. The actual number is not supposed to be 61,084, it's supposed to be 68,000, 069. So if the individual making the motion for consent would do so with the amendment and that correction, that would be helpful.
I'll move to approve consent with the amended numbers in item 24.
Second.
Motion is second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry to interrupt. The added component was to correct a number that was omitted from the actual initial bid. It keeps the current bid, which is an emergency procurement, as you see in the agenda, keeps it at 14,000 and change below the next highest bidder, so it would not alter the recommendation for the item, and it does account for the full need of that emergency procurement.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. We did have a second, didn't we?
Yeah. Tom did, I believe. Tom, you did second, right?
All right, we're moving to public hearing. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 21-11, tax map number 536000101. Zoning request to rezone from RD1 to RUD, 13.71 acres in District 4.
Good evening, members of council. This request is to downzone the subject parcel from RD1 to RUD. The principal reason for that is the applicant would like to reserve the potential to utilize the site for commercial equestrian uses. So under the current zoning, RD1, the applicant will be able to construct a single-family home and retain horses on the property under the applicant's ownership. However, if the applicant wanted to use the property for commercial equestrian uses such as boarding of horses or horseback riding lessons, things of that nature, they would need to have the RUD zoning designation. So that's the nature of the request. Staff is recommending denial of the request, and that's because, as you can see in the future land use designation here, it has the designation of single-family residential, so this request does not comply with that future land use designation. And the reason for that designation is because this is at the fringe outskirts of the western extent of the city of Rock Hill. There are available water and sewer utility services, and this is within the limits of the urban services boundary. So the comprehensive plan calls for the efficient use of the existing utility infrastructure. This request would not do that. However, the planning commission did recommend, by a vote of eight to zero, to approve this request. They did not directly address the comprehensive plan in making their motion, but they did state that there would be a limited impact with this request on the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions before we move on to public hearing?
Yeah, exactly what is this? So it's a commercial equestrian?
So you'll have to ask the applicant if she's here this evening. I think she has a couple of different potential plans in mind for the property, so she could utilize it today under the current zoning and the proposed zoning for a single-family home with a horse barn and have some horses on the property. But if she wanted to use it for commercial enterprises, to have folks come to the site and pay for services to board horses or to get lessons, it would need to have the RUD zoning, not the RD1.
Okay. So in regards to this, this is what, over 13 acres?
Correct.
Over 13. It's a large, so size-wise, it will more than meet their needs as far as what they're looking for.
Correct.
Down, including horse. Down, including horse and boarding horses.
Right.
Any other questions? At this time, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning, if you want to come forward. If there's anyone here who wants to speak in favor of this rezoning, if you want to come forward.
Is the applicant even here?
I could probably clarify.
Yes, that would be great.
So Rita Presley. This property was family property, and if you look, the narrow piece beside it, and there's three more there, and then across the road is all family property with no intention to develop that I know of, which is great. What we do is, it is commercial. I don't know if it even really applies. I know technically it is commercial. But we have a couple of horses of our own. We teach a few lessons, and I have people that bring in their horses for training. They might leave them for a month to two months, and then they take them back. They might come back for a week for a clinic or something, but it's very, very low-key and low-traffic.
So you're not boarding?
No.
Tons of horses?
Temporarily at times for a month, but then they go.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you said family owns the land beside of it and across the street currently?
They do.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I'd like to move to approve for the sake of discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I'm going to start off by saying that, you know, while I was sitting here looking at what staff recommends, as well as what the planning commission recommends, I can only think about my good friend Kerwood Chapel when he sat here. And he would always champion that, you know, if a person wants to utilize their property for what they want to utilize it for, who are we to tell them that they can't do it? And I wanted to open this discussion up because, you know, at first reading, surrounding neighbors, the public, don't really know what's going on. And so I wanted to kind of move it forward one more step to kind of make it known that this is being considered, because all too many times, people see signs go up and not sure what's happening. But now, from this meeting, and maybe through some more conversation, more people in the surrounding areas will find out what's going on. And if they have any objections, or if they support it, maybe they'll come here and express their concerns. I certainly don't want to be the one to say no, but I want to make sure that the surrounding neighborhoods, the character of the area is obviously protected, as well as give this property owner every opportunity to make a case for what their wishes with their property is. Obviously, if it's going to be a detriment to this community, it may be a little tougher to swallow, but I want to give this applicant every opportunity to make the case, not just to us, but to surrounding neighbors and surrounding property owners as well. And one thing I have to keep in mind, and we have to keep in mind, is that the intended use may be fine and well now, but if the property changes hands, what does this open up to impact the surrounding communities going forward, whether it's five years, 10 years, or whatever down the road? And it's always tough when you get staff saying one thing, planning commission says another. And we're the ultimate decider, so I want to make sure that, you know, we hear from every angle, every aspect of what can and what can't be before we say yes or before we say no. So I would like to ask my colleagues to kind of help me advance this to the next step. We can have some more discussions to see what this actually looks like, what it's going to feel like, because it is, you know, right up next to single-family homes. So if there's going to be any concerns going down that road, I would like for it to be known publicly what the full intentions are, and maybe if possible, we can make it work. And if not, you know, it'll be what it's going to be. But I would like to at least get to the second reading, as well as educate myself and the surrounding areas as well.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
I think we have the motion to approve on the floor.
Yeah. So I do have one comment, though. I do agree with your comments there in regards to this, and I think the property itself lends for a greater opportunity here, so just want to share that thought.
Any other comments from council? I certainly support this. I'm not real sure I understand the opposition in light of the fact that future land use allows for single-family residential, and this is RUD, so I certainly will support this. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 21-12, tax map numbers 4480000244, 8384, 149, to rezone from BD1, RUD1, and AGC1 to RC1, 16.278 acres in District 3. Mr. Poynna.
Yes, this request is to rezone five separate parcels formerly under the YMCA ownership, or currently, but prospective sale to RC1, with the intent of Lake Point Academy relocating here. So Lake Point Academy had, well, their plan is to utilize the existing structures that are on-site and add some additional parking there. So the future land use designation is single-family residential here as well, so this use of a school site would conform with that designation. Therefore, staff recommends approval subject to two conditions. The first being to add some traffic calming measures, because there are parcels on either side of the street, so asking for some traffic calming so that we can have some safe crossings there for the schoolchildren. And also, the second condition there would be the requirement to have a Tier 2 TIA done. The project currently is only required to have a Tier 1, but staff is asking for a condition that they would have to do a Tier 2 if the school changed their attendance schedule from an alternating day to an everyday, or if they reached a threshold of 250 students in their enrollment. Planning commission also recommended approval of this request by a vote of eight to zero and subject to the same two conditions.
I have one question. How will the monitoring of the 250 students, will that be left to the school just to let us know when they've achieved that threshold and they need to do a Tier 2, or is that...
Yeah, as it's currently written, that condition requires them to inform York County if their enrollment changes and exceeds that threshold, or if they change their alternating day schedule.
Any other questions before we move to public hearing? Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? If you want to come forward, please make sure you state your name and address before you speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom Flanagan, 253 Teboks Court here in York. I believe I sent you all an email August 9th outlining my position opposing this rezoning. And my position is this, I urge you to deny the application. The Glens and the Carolina Downs residents are a true residential area. The lots in question are zoned residential. By making this change, you're going to allow the school to come in, put a serpentine driveway in, and I can just envision, in the middle of our neighborhood, 50 idling cars waiting to pick up their children from school. I think it's a dramatic change to our neighborhood. The other point that I'll make to you is, the infrastructure at the intersection of Carolina Crossing Drive and South Shiloh Road will not support the traffic. There absolutely will be increased traffic in the morning and in the evening. There's no school buses that bring students. All the students arrive by private automobile. I further went on to state our public safety concerns. If you look around the county of York, areas where schools are on two-lane highways, there's been accommodation for that. There's been turn lanes, traffic controls. I cited the examples on Mount Galant, Riverwalk Academy, Mount Galant Elementary, Dutchman Creek. Those schools were all put in on two-lane highways, but there were accommodations made. In regard to the planning commission approving the application, they did so without having the ability to look at the Tier 1 analysis. It wasn't made available to them in their packet. The Tier 1 traffic analysis that was submitted by Lake Point Academy stated that their enrollment, that their enrollment would be 160 at 80 students per session. They split their sessions Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Tuesday and Thursday. So they split it in half, and they said there would be 80 trips, and there wouldn't be any increase, and it wouldn't approach the threshold of 100 peak trips, morning or afternoon rush hours, that would trigger a Tier 2. Well, when Mr. Rogers stood before the planning commission, he stated that they had 210 children enrolled on July 12th. The Tier 1 was dated June 7th. And he also went on to state that 120 secondary students would be there on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. There was no accounting for teachers or staff to arrive, I don't know how they would get to the building. So the Tier 1's traffic analysis is flawed. Your staff member at the plane department, Mr. Stevens, stated to me, and in an email, they could only work with the numbers that the applicant provided. Additionally, they were, Mr. Rogers was asked at the planning commission meeting, what the future would hold for this school, what their plans were going forward. Well, he stated that the 210 enrollment was about what they thought they would have going forward. When you look at their brochure, their prospective parent brochure, they already have architectural plans on their existing campus to build a 400-student building on a five-acre site. I can only imagine they're coming to a 16-acre site to do the same. It would dramatically change the appearance, the quality of life that we have to... I've also heard from proponents of this that they wouldn't be creating more traffic than the YMCA or the Cotton Hall did. If that's the case, a Tier 2 survey will prove that point correct or incorrect. The Glens Homeowners Association has asked our attorneys, Karen Stein and Love, to provide the council members, the board members, with a legal opinion on the covenants with regard to the YMCA lots. And our attorney came back and said, they don't believe that the school can operate within our covenants, based on the usage, specific usage that was delineated for the lots, Lot 67, Lot 1, and Lot 2. They're coming right in to our residential neighborhood. They will be adjacent to homeowners, the lots. If the council is not inclined to deny this application, I would strongly urge you to make a prerequisite to approving this change, that a Tier 2 traffic survey be done. I'm not sure what the penalty is for not providing accurate information on an application, but I can tell you this. The people of the Glens and the Carolina Crossings, and the people that live, work, and travel on South Shiloh Road will bear the burden for poor planning for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this rezoning?
I'm Maria Morrison. I live at 769 Teboks Court. We have lived here for seven years, and this was our retirement home. We are at the back of this whole entire area, and the only entrance that we have is the Carolina Crossing entrance. Now, most schools in this area are not sending school buses and parents through a residential area. Let's take Hunter Street Elementary School, where all three of our grandchildren went. They have a dedicated entrance that goes into that school. Now, our children are at the York Intermediate. Then again, a dedicated entrance going into that school. Same thing with the middle school, same thing with the high school. All of these have a dedicated entrance. I am not for using our only entrance for 48-plus houses and more coming each year at the Glens at Carolina Crossing. And this goes for the people on Carolina Downs. This is our only entrance and exit. What I feel should be added to these conditions, first of all, it's sort of hard, because I am for RC1. I am for that rezoning, because it will save our residential area from a business coming in. We fought long and hard for Dollar General when we barely had moved here two weeks, and I came before the council, but that went in because that was progress, and so we have a business there. This RC1 will protect it. But what we want, and the majority of the people, I am sure, feel this way, is that we want our entrance protected, and we do not want them using the Carolina Crossing for their only entrance and exit for the school. They need a dedicated entrance. I don't care for their serpentine design whatsoever. They need to have, but York County also has to look at Shiloh Road, which is a country road. It is a simple country road. It doesn't even have a berm. I only can imagine what is going to happen when people come to pick up their kids. The other concern that I have is the fact that, I am not sure whether they shared this with the planning commission, but they have a dream. And Mr. Flanagan spoke to that, that on their website is a school that would be 400 students. That is their dream. The design was for their current site, and I do agree with Mr. Flanagan. There are 16 acres here. A 400-student school is the size of Hunter Street Elementary School. So I feel that RC1 is a fine rezoning designation. However, York County road and everything needs to look long and hard about even the school right now at 187 students by requiring a dedicated entrance in and out of that school so that it is not interfering with our Carolina Crossing, which we need for our own entrance to and from our division, plus, heaven forbid, that there is an emergency coming in here at the time their school lets out. And the concern is, would EMS be able to get in, and would a fire engine be able to get in? So my big purpose here is to add another condition of a dedicated entrance like the other schools in this area. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Again, if you would state your name and address when you reach the podium.
My name's Ken Rogers, and I'm with Lake Point Academy. I'm the treasurer, and I have a couple of my associates, Melody Miller and Louis Lemon, the headmaster of Lake Point Academy. And perhaps what I ought to do, there are a lot of, I couldn't hear Mr. Flanagan's comments about things I said or didn't say. And so if there was a question about those from y'all, I'd be allowed to respond to those. And then there was some dialogue about the traffic study. Our civil engineer, Mr. Chris Wood, is here, so I'd like to introduce those folks. I'm gonna step back, and then you want to start with the traffic study? I think we'll talk about that first. It appears to be a large item. Lake Point Academy, one thing to, we've been around for north of 15 years. We're thankful to be a part of the community. We have today 205 students registered in our school. And I would only about the dream of 400 students. I haven't seen that on the website lately. I would share with you, I had a lot of dreams when I was five years old that I've forgotten between here and there as well. When I was speaking with, in good faith, with Mr. Flanagan, with Ms. Miriam, with the Homeowners Association. Our position is that we are 205 today. We haven't been above 200 in our existence. And we're very different. I think the school that we shared as an illustration for 400 students was Hunter Street, or Hunter Elementary School. We're very different than Hunter Elementary School. Hunter Elementary School, they all show up five days a week. Our students are split, elementary school students. In fact, we have, in the secondary this year, and it flows back and forth, we have 135 students. And in our primary grades, via K-5 through 6th grade, we have approximately 80 students. And so that's a very different context, if you will, from 400 students showing up on the same day. So when we evaluated, when Chris Wood, Mr. Wood, did our traffic study, and we analyzed that, and we built our models, it's not based on a dream of 400 students every day. It's based on reality, where we live and breathe every day, where we create our budgets, where we evaluate our needs. And that is what we have put forth before the rezoning commission in good faith, and before the Homeowners Association in truth, and before y'all tonight. So I want to begin with that, and then I'll introduce Chris first, and then we'll come back with a few other items.
Chris Wood, Joel Wood and Associates. In discussions with Mr. Stevens, when we were looking at the Tier One traffic study, what he charged us with was looking at the traffic data at their current facility, and also what could the expected or anticipated traffic from the YMCA and Cotton Hall currently be the acceptable traffic or expected traffic for facilities of those sizes. The YMCA is a BD1 property at the corner. With its current size, based on International Transportation Board's Trip Generation Manual, the anticipated traffic for a facility of that size could be expected as much as 560 trips per day. With 24 peak morning and 67 peak afternoon trips. And the Cotton Hall, with its current capacity as allowed by the Fire Marshal, could be expected as much as 132 trips per day. So looking at what would be accepted, or could their full use of the properties at this time, you could expect as much as 692 daily trips for those two facilities. Then looking back at the Lake Point Academy, the information provided to us there, over the last 15 years, they've operated at about 200 students per day. 200 students total with a roughly 50-50 split because primary and secondary children operate on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the Tuesday, Thursday class schedule. So you basically have half those students on any given day. And looking at that, 200 students over the last 15 years, we projected a 20% growth to take that to 257 total students in our traffic analysis to look at what those peaks would be per day, if they had a 20% growth over the students that they had had currently at this time, and then traditionally over that 15-year period. Those total trips per day would be 214 trips per day, 72 peak morning, and 13 peak afternoon trips with a student body of 257 students. And I think, Chris, based on those numbers, that's why he recommended the Tier Two be implemented if the school reached that 250 threshold. Because if you go to a larger school and another building, it would have to go through another traffic analysis, site plan approval, DOT approval potentially for driveways. So I think he made that condition based on that evaluation. Any questions?
We don't typically do questions. We just listen to, that's fine.
I heard you say that.
Randomly, we go off schedule.
I was throwing a line of numbers out, so.
No, if there's anything else you want to add on your comment and support?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Louis Lemon, 3068 Van Hook Drive here in York. And I have been the headmaster of the school since its third year. This is our 17th year. Many of you probably haven't heard of us. There's a reason. We're tiny. I like the word modest. It sounds better. It probably does, I don't know if it says "dream" on the website. But we had an architect who worked at the Camp Canaan camp to come in and do a study for us about how we might maximize our current 4.86-acre tiny campus. And I expected him to tell us to move, and he didn't. He said, "You got a great location. Stay with it. We'll design something." And I said, "Well, show me how it would max out." That's where the number for 400 comes, and it wouldn't be approved today because we made some assumptions. As Mr. Rogers said, we have over 200 students for the first time. We had 210 students in July. You know how people change their minds. We did not add students after July 1. So we shrink. We're at 205. First time ever we started school with over 200. If you go back 10 years, we've been 165 to 170, going up slowly to 200. Why? Growth is assumed in America, the bigger you are, the better you are. That is not our goal. So if it ever was a dream 400, we have long since relinquished that. Why? We are a niche school. A parent who wants to spend time in the education of their children, particularly in the Christian faith, would come to our school, but they would be involved in the schooling at home. They make a significant commitment that so many citizens cannot do. They just can't. But we want to cater to those people who want that mentoring relationship that we have. So I'm concerned that you might hear some of the things that Mr. Flanagan shared, and they fit the public or large private school model, but they don't fit us. We're looking for more space to have more green space for the children, a gymnasium which we do not have. COVID and rain have been a little tough on everybody, certainly on us. But we do not dream to go to 400. We do not think, our officials do not think, that we can do what we do at that number. If we were going to go anywhere close, we would split off and have a school in some other location and support that school most probably. We are currently in a residential area. We have been at that location since 2006. And it sounds crazy, but our pickup line, pretty simple. When we did the traffic study, we stacked a total of seven at the maximum. Seven cars on our campus was the maximum that we stacked on a day. Our school is unusual. Just say it again. We have junior high and senior high kids come Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. No elementary. Elementary come on Tuesday and Thursday. So whatever number we take, you divide it, and that's how it works. So Mr. Flanagan is entitled to his opinion. He has some concerns, some fears. Those are understandable. I might stand before you if I had the same. But we don't plan to grow that large. We have met with the Homeowners Association numerous times. We've met with the officers. We've met with them in large. We streamed. Tonight, you do not have the president of the HOA here. You do not have the gentleman who owns the house closest to our school here. So I ask you to consider the big picture.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else which, to speak in favor?
Sure. I'm Kirk Ike, 723 Harvest Point Drive, Fort Mill. I am also the executive director of the upper palmetto YMCA. First of all, I'd just like to, you know, tell the folks who are in opposition of this rezoning that I'm truly sorry that, you know, closing the YMCA has had a direct impact on the neighborhood because it's an unfortunate consequence. We went from 16 YMCA's roughly a year and a half ago to, down to 12. And so, you know, COVID has had an effect on the country. It definitely had an effect on our association. So we're a smaller association, and we're taking the resources that we're getting from Carolina Crossing and putting it back into the York YMCA, which is right around the corner from here. So we're trying to do goodwill with the monies received. Unfortunately, for the neighborhood, there is a business component that is existing. That doesn't change the concerns of the neighborhood and the citizens that live there. But, you know, BD1, the lady who spoke, the, excuse me, the, yeah, so BD1 for the main portion of the Y building, we could sell that property. If we don't sell it to Lake Point Academy, we're gonna sell it to somebody. And so, you know, just speaking for myself, if I lived in the neighborhood, I'd probably want a smaller private school than a QT sitting in there. So, and then as far as a comparison to another school, my kids go to Walnut Grove Christian School, which is a very similar small school, about 200 kids. And they go Monday through Thursday, so they have a little different model. But it's a small school. Most people don't even know, never even heard of Lake Point Academy or Walnut Grove Christian School. So with that, I think the staff's recommendation of doing a TIA Two, if and when they hit that threshold, I would be really surprised if they ever do hit that threshold. Although, you know, there's no guarantee on that. And really, as far as the impact on the neighborhood from the school, that property's gonna change. There's, make no mistake about it, either it's Lake Point Academy or somebody else. So there's gonna be impact on the neighborhood. There's already zoning that allows for that impact. Whether or not the neighborhood wants that impact or doesn't, it's gonna be there. And so I would say that Lake Point Academy is probably the, you know, the most logical use, although there's definitely concerns there. And I would, you know, if I'm in y'all's position, I would support the zoning request.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning?
I'd like to close with just two more thoughts, if I may. Again, Ken Rogers with Lake Point Academy, and I want to thank y'all for your support of Lake Point over the years. One illustration for the size of our traffic and how significant it is, a 274. We requested blinking lights from the county and a speed zone, pardon me, from the state off 274. They refused. They gave us signage because our numbers weren't big enough. So that gives you some level of the gravity of who we've been over several years. Outside of that box, I do want to share with you a dream. And Mr. Ike knows this from, this is the first paragraph I introduced to him and the YMCA as to my interest individually in the YMCA, Lake Point Academy, and the community. And that involved, I had the privilege of serving with the Y for years. Haven't been involved with them. Certainly haven't been working out there for a number, a couple of years, but haven't been involved in advisory services for a while, but have been involved in Lake Point Academy. But I believe the YMCA is a tremendous organization. It's one of the few places we can go where, whether it's race, whether it's wealth or economic, or whether it's religious, whatever status you are, we all can gravitate to one location. And so I love that about the Y. I love the fellowship I had there, and I think it's a tremendous asset to our community. And so with that, I shared with Mr. Ike and his board in our letter that this is a dream of mine, to having been, had the opportunity to serve with the Y and work out there, to minister to them by acquiring the property. It's a dream of mine to minister to the community at Lake Point Academy, to be able to acquire a facility that actually has a basketball court. Today, we don't have a basketball court. We don't have a volleyball court. We don't have soccer fields. It's been a dream of mine. My sixth child is going through, and he may or may not have the opportunity to play ball or volleyball or whatever in the same facility that he goes to school at. Instead, what we do today is we drive, in some cases 10 miles, to soccer fields, basketball courts, et cetera, drop our children off and pick them up again. So it's been a dream to have it under one roof, to facilitate the education development of young adults, becoming men and women to serve our community. And it's been a dream. I live in that community, not in that developed. But I live several miles down the road, and I drive by Carolina Crossing. It is my desire, if you know, and many of you don't, but some of you do know my background in New York, to invest in our community, to bring about development in a favorable way for the good of the community. And so in his letter, it was a win for the YMCA. It's certainly a win for Lake Point Academy to have those things, but it's also a win for our community. And I would suggest it's a win for Carolina Crossing, the entire community, whether it be the Homeowners Association, or whether it be the communities across the street. We are, I believe, the best solution for the YMCA that is empty today and for the Cotton Hall that is being emptied tomorrow. I encourage you, as a county council, to join, and I encourage you to vote in favor of a win, win, win for the community, YMCA, and for Lake Point Academy. I appreciate you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing, no. The public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve with the conditions recommended by staff.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
I've been contacted by several of you with concerns, some for this and some against it. But, and I've said to all of you that I believe in trying to get as much input as we can for the applicants and the citizens to work together on things, to try to come to an understanding on things. And so I try, in my six years on council, I can't think of any time I've ever voted to kill anything on the first reading. It's just against my policy because I believe there's a reason we have three readings to give opportunities for people to try to work out their differences and come to some understanding on things. I have gotten, as I think all of us did, the email raising some questions on the Homeowners Association's attorney's opinion. And I've asked our attorneys to look at that and give us feedback on that before we get to the point of a final reading on this thing so we can get an understanding of that. I'm not an attorney in any way, shape, or form, but I believe, from what little bit I do understand, that the county's zoning and the Homeowners Association standards are two separate things. We can only vote on the zoning. The Homeowners Association issues may be something that is handled through courts and not through our vote on our rezoning or something. So, but I have asked county attorneys to look over the questions that were raised by that attorney just to give us feedback before we have a final vote so we can make a better decision.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm not sure if he's ready tonight because I didn't get the stuff to him until just a couple of days ago, so.
Mr. Goffey.
Yeah, I want to say, echo Councilman Winkler just said, as far as shooting this down on first reading, I would not be for. However, there are some things that I would be interested to hear at second reading. Number one, does Lake Point have a dedicated entrance currently? If, and if, is there a way to have a dedicated entrance into Lake Point Academy coming from or to avoid going through Carolina Crossing?
We don't take questions at this time. That'll be taken up later. Any other comments or questions from council? Mr. Roddy.
I'll just make a quick question, or actually a quick note, that some of the concerns and issues that Mr. Flanagan made and issues that Ms. Flanagan made, obviously concerned the tier-two trigger point and some of those kind of issues, I think those would be good things for this council to kind of digest and look forward to going forward. Like Councilman Winkler said, you know, we have three readings, so some of this can be hashed out, some questions. Now we can bounce things off of staff to kind of get a little more familiar with kind of how this is perceived to play out over a course of time. And certainly, anytime educational opportunities have come up to this council, I think we've given it every opportunity to move forward, if it can be worked out. So hopefully, our questions will get answered and hopefully some more dialogue and conversation between the two parties publicly can kind of start to work through some things. We always encourage those for it, those against it, those proposing it, to kind of continue to meet during this process because one way or another, it's either going to happen or it's not going to happen, or someone else is going to go to that property. So get familiar and get acquainted with the neighbors, continue to have dialogue because you guys may be able to work some things out that we may not even be able to touch. And so just continue to have that open dialogue. And we all know it's tough when one side wants something and another side doesn't. So I would just encourage both sides to continue to have that open dialogue regardless of where it may take us. I think that's really key and important because you may become neighbors in the same environment eventually, and then again, you may not. But continue to have that dialogue with each other.
So I just want to say that I'm going to support this. And the reason I'm going to support this is because I know what good neighbors Lake Point Academy is. They are currently in my district and for years I've driven by and thought, what do they do there? Because there's never anybody there. And there's no traffic. There is no traffic. And they do have an entrance that is on a side road where they go back to a very small little, kind of a little turnaround for parents. There's never been any cars lined up on 274. And that entrance is only from the curb of 274. I don't know how many feet, but just what their building is because they enter from the side of that building. I went and took a tour, not because this was coming up, because this wasn't coming up when I did that, but I went and took the tour and it's very well done. It's very simple. It is a school that people come from all over the county. They come from Gaston County and Mecklenburg County to this school as well, I believe. And I think this puts it in more of a central location for York County. And I just, I think they're good neighbors. I look at what the alternatives would be and I'm not someone who would ever have supported the Dollar General on the corner, obviously. People might know that already, but I think that this is really, I do think the word win is a good term because I think the neighbors will be glad that this is what they got instead of what you may possibly get going forward.
Frankly, I agree. I'm almost a little astonished to hear the opposition considering what could be coming before us with council. And also, you know, I am familiar with Lake Point Academy. It's a fantastic program, full of fantastic families. I wish there was room in my neighborhood for it because we would welcome it. And it is certainly not true to say that it's unusual for neighborhoods to have schools. Two come to mind, close to me, both Mason's Ben and Baxter have large public schools in those neighborhoods and it certainly has done nothing to affect property values. In fact, I believe it has enhanced them. They certainly don't have any trouble selling properties in those areas. And it's also telling that I don't see anyone with school-aged children here in opposition to this. So I am definitely going to support this.
Any other comments from council? This is first reading for folks who haven't already picked up on that, so there are two more readings after this. And I support Mr. Winkler in this district that he's in. I do think that all of us would encourage you to continue, the proponents of this, continue to meet with the folks that have expressed concerns. I think they have some legitimate concerns. Continue to have those meetings and see if there are ways to resolve those or explain to them why they don't need to be resolved. That's important to me when it comes to final reading, just to make sure that that level of dialogue continues to be open. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing nothing, hearing none, a motion passes. We move to rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-13, tax map number 5350000155156157 to rezone from RC2 to RD2, 3.67 acres in District 4. Mr. Buono.
Yes, this application is for the three subject parcels. There are eight existing homes that are on these three parcels and the rezoning seeks to go from RC2 to RD2. The applicant has submitted this plat as part of their rezoning application. The intent is to subdivide all of the parcels into eight separate parcels, one for each of the existing homes that are on the property. And this would bring the properties into zoning compliance. Right now, they're nonconforming with single-family homes, multiples of them on a single lot. So the request does not meet the single-family residential or rural center future land use designations according to the comprehensive plan. However, as I mentioned, this would correct an existing nonconforming situation from a zoning standpoint. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request, subject to a single condition, with that condition being that the applicant submit a preliminary plat that is substantially conforming with the one that they submitted for this rezoning request. And by a vote of eight to zero, the planning commission likewise recommended approval, subject to the same condition.
Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning?
Moved to close.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. I assume those are with the recommended conditions.
Yes.
Mr. Roddy.
I want to say real quick that when I saw the rezoning signs that went up for this property, and obviously, a couple of years ago, we had someone rezoned the property to put storage buildings, you know, in the vicinity of these properties here. So when I saw it go up, I thought it was going to be for an expansion of the storage facility because the gentleman who did the facility several years ago said that he would look to expand it once he got up and going. So they didn't get a call from Mr. Darby. I said, oh, I'm glad you called because I see some rezonings going up for the property or they expanding the storage facility. He said, no, we've got an unusual situation. And obviously, these homes were built before a lot of county zoning went in place, so you didn't have to have them surveyed and put single families on this particular, they were just building houses and putting them wherever they could. So now what this process is going to do is go back and correct, or bring them into compliance to be able to sell these homes, obviously, to individuals. And one thing that he said that really caught my attention and I liked it, he said, we could just sell the whole ball of wax to an investor or somebody to come in and buy all this property with these homes on it, continue to rent them as they are. He said, but we want to subdivide these properties, put them on individual lots so that the tenants who currently reside in them, which they're rental property, will have the opportunity to remain in the homes and purchase them themselves. So I thought that was a real commendable option because obviously, we've changed the zoning in that area to allow storage buildings to go there and it really brought the area to an upgrade. And so the same thing could have been done with these homes too, if someone wanted to tear them, buy the whole lot, tear them down and build something else there. But he wants to basically rezone or subdivide and put each individual home on its own lot so that the existing renters have the option to purchase it versus selling the whole track of land and homes to one guy or one developer to come in and, you know, do whatever he wishes to do with it. So I thought that was real good. So I'll be supporting this. I think it's a good thing. And obviously, there are some hoops and bounds that's going to have to be met, but this is a real good thing that we're doing here.
Any other comments or questions, council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do not have any old business, so we'll move to new business. Counsel to approve a resolution supporting and recommending a list of potential York County projects eligible for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds as established under the American Rescue Act, the Act, directing the submission of the list of potential York County projects to the United States Treasury Department in advance of August 31st, 2021, as required by the Act, acknowledging that such submission is nonbinding and subject to the facilitation of an ongoing public engagement process by York County and is further subject to a final review and approval process relative to each project and ultimately a formal authorization and appropriation process to occur within the timelines established by the Act and authorizing such action as may be related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy.
I want to say real quick, I was not at the workshop that this was kind of worked on and kind of kicked around a little bit. And so I was able to get a brief update afterwards of what was discussed. And I know this money coming into our control, it's going to be a real big help with some things that we're wanting to do. And obviously, the project's going to be developed over the coming months. And I do, and I've already talked to Kevin and threw some things out, even though we don't have a defined project list right now. But I think a good way for us to kind of look at this is that we use this money to really benefit our mission and our goals here at York County. And obviously, we've talked about, prior to even getting this money, before it was on our radar, we talked about obviously getting into the water sewer, the water treatment business. And I think that's kind of where we really need to be in some of the projects that individual council members kind of have lurking in the back of their minds, is going to fall right in line with using this money for some of those type projects. So I'm looking forward to throwing out what I think it should be done with it. And we got some areas that really need to be taken care of, that we can really make an impact with some money in some of our county areas. So I'm looking forward to best utilizing this money to benefit a lot of people here in York County. So it's a good thing that we got these funds available.
Yeah, so just to piggyback a little bit on what you're coming, yeah, I think access and study to water and sewer facility, I know that's something that I think has come up before and I think that is going to be critical. I think we've got a good opportunity here to actually move that ball forward in regards to looking at that study. So I would call that we do move forward with a study of water sewer facility. I do have a general concern though, and I think Kevin, you touched upon it, I think that the impact of this revenue, this money's coming out of Washington, does, I think, have though, an inflationary effect on everyone across the board. And I'm very concerned about us being involved with revenues that are coming out of the federal government that will, down the road, cost us additional money that was never ever budgeted in. Big concern about inflation moving forward, and then I just want to express that concern to the people in this room and to the staff and council.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports. The Honorable Chairwoman Allison Love, zoning committee.
Okay. I still got half of it. We met, the zoning committee met on Tuesday, July the 20th, and again, on August 11th. And our discussion on the 20th, Councilman Goffey and Roddy were at that meeting and we discussed small business and what maybe we do in regards to planning and zoning that may be hurdles for small businesses, especially startup businesses. So we just wanted to kind of vet some of those questions and some of those county policies as far as that goes. I think that was a good meeting. And we also discussed zoning for poultry in that meeting. We did a follow-up meeting on the 20th and with a further discussion on poultry, where it's allowed, where it's not allowed and why, where it should be allowed possibly and where it shouldn't be allowed and all of that. And so we have decided that after some discussion, that we will allow that to come through with the recode. So the staff will make recommendations to all of us at one time regarding chickens. And we're talking about backyard chickens, not chicken farms and, you know, ag-type chicken situations. So we will definitely be hearing more on that topic going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Love. We have a report from Finance and Operations from the Honorable, Mr. Winkler.
Thank you. Finance and Operations met this evening at 5:30 and myself, Councilmember Love and Councilmember Hamilton were there. We considered applications for service from the Bethel Fire Tax District Board and we recommended the appointment of Kyle Eller to fill an unexpired term. On the Bethesda Fire Tax District Board, we recommended the reappointment of Julie Rogers for a second term and Marlo Dykes for a second term. On the York County Library Board, we were busy. We had a lot of things. And so we recommended Chelsea Paget for District 1, Willis Whitley for District 2, Anne Whitty for District 3, April Hershey for District 7, and I am off one there, yep.
Yeah, Willis, we didn't recommend Willis.
Okay. And actually, I may have written this down wrong. I might need Karen to back me up on that unless you've got it. Because I think I wrote down the wrong, when y'all made the motions. I was trying to write them down as fast as y'all were doing them there.
So we make a recommendation for Anne Whit for District 3, April Hershey for District 7, and then we had three at-large seats that we recommended, Chelsea Paget, Tiffany Moller and Talia White.
Sorry. That's right. I had it written, but I had them in the wrong order on some of them, so I apologize for that. That's why I'm glad Karen's there sometimes to keep it straight on.
I know it.
And then we also had a discussion regarding the ordinance amendment or what management recommends as far as the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau or Keep York County Beautiful. And management has been meeting with Billy Dunlap from that organization and also from City of Rock Hill PRT, looking at different options. And they presented what they feel like are three viable options at this point, but we've asked them to continue to look at that and bring us something more substantial than just three kind of high-level options because it's going to have to come before the full council, not just Finance and Operations to make that recommendation. It's got to be a full council that decides what we do with our organization. You know, we've cut the funding, now we need to figure out how they should be structured. And then we got a real quick update from Finance and Operations because we were running out of money at the end of there, or out of time at the end, not money. We were running out of time and didn't have time to discuss money.
Time equals money.
Sorry, it's been a long night.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. At this time, we have council member, non-agenda comments. Any council members wishing to speak or raise an issue that's not on the agenda? Mr. Roddy.
We got this eye contact thing going on. I just want to say real quick, I know a lot of kids and parents are excited about schools starting back and in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten a couple of phone calls about, you know, kids are going to be back out at the bus stop. And for a while now, we haven't seen any kids out in the morning, so people kind of have maybe relaxed their driving habits. So just want to put it out that we are going to have kids out at the bus stops. Be mindful of it. I've already contacted Chief Watts with the Rock Hill Police Department to see if we can have some more officers out kind of in the areas where kids are going to be standing because a lot of kids are at the bus stop now at 5:45, 6 o'clock in the morning. I see them on the way to, I'm sure I'll be seeing them on the way going to work now. So just putting it out there, be mindful of the kids out. I'm sure they're going to be excited to see friends once again out at the bus stop, so they may kind of let their guards down to the safety as well. So just keep that in mind. And I am so glad that the kids have an opportunity to go back to school and hopefully things won't get out of hand with this COVID again and cause another school shutdown. So we're praying for our kids and our teachers to be safe, be mindful of what's out there and protect yourself if at all possible, when at all possible. Welcome back to school, kids.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Aldette.
Yeah, two quick items. Based on our meetings that we had with Beyond 77, there was a discussion around their regional planning program that they had, which was based on the members that were involved in these meetings. There was concern- There was concerns about the outreach of their regional planning coming out of what they were expecting from our area. So there was a vote taken, or there was a decision talked about in regards to our participation in Beyond 77. And that information, based on the members that were involved in it, we, there was a message sent back to Beyond 77 that would be separating from that regional planning program, just because of the concerns of losing any type of local controls. So I just want to share that with you. The other thing I want to congratulate, the Nation Ford ROTC Rifle Program in July, they won the National Rifle Championship. They're in Alabama, so kudos to that rifle team. Great job, Nation Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Aldette. Any other counsel?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, I do actually. Thank you, Brandon. I appreciate that. I did, I had it written down, but I didn't. The Fort Mill Dixie Youth, big victory, okay? They won the, was it the double A?
World Series.
Yeah, World Series, double A. Big ceremony for them in Fort Mill. Very exciting. They won it, won it all, and we had a big hoopla welcoming back for them a few days ago. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Goffey, for the assist.
Yeah.
I knew you wanted to say something.
Yeah, absolutely did. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just want to remind everyone that August 28th is Summer Fest here in York. And unfortunately, we didn't get to have one last year because of COVID. As everybody said, COVID messed up a lot of things over the last two years or so. But it's the first one. It's an event that had gone has gone on for, I believe, 30 years, right at it, before last year caused us not to be able to have one. So it is, at one point, it was the largest single-day event in the state of South Carolina. Not sure how it'll be this year, but please come out and support, and there'll be some some good activities and some fun things to do for the kids and stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. I do have a couple of things I just want to make sure the council is aware of. I believe the entire council received an email concerning a fire district issue that I think came from Oakdale. That is something that we've requested management and staff to provide a response to, and it's likely that it will be referred to the JPS Committee with Mr. Goffey as the chair of that committee if we need to do that. At this, one other thing that I do want council to be aware of, we have a gap and a problem with our enforcement code right now, where essentially, if there is an owner who is missing, or they are not there, and they continually get violations from the county, and it's causing infestation or basically egregious violations where they're continuing to get warnings, the county doesn't have an opportunity to step in to address that isolated issue where there's a there's a missing owner concept to that. I've asked Legal to take a look at that and and look at proposing something to close that gap. I would like for council to consider taking a look at that. Typically, when we have an ordinance revision, it's it's a title reading only at the first reading, and then we'll move it to a committee to see if there are any issues with that. But I wanted to give you all a heads up on that, and we can, just didn't want anyone to be taken aback from that. At this time, we have Citizen Concerns. Mr. Dillip Patel to address counsel regarding Pennies for Progress Roads Project on Riverview Road.
You're getting a handout now, so I'll wait for a second. My name is Dillip Patel. I live 957 Waverly Avenue here in Rock Hill, South Carolina. Madam Chair and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. First of all, I want to applaud for what you guys do. It's not easy, which decisions you make and the ideals and things that come across as tough decisions, but what you guys do is make York County better, so I appreciate what you guys do. In fact, the package you have in front of you, skip the first page. We'll come back to that later. I come to talk to you about the Pennies for Project on Riverview Road, which is dealing buried the underground utilities. I don't know what what has changed since 1995 up to three, four weeks ago. I believe everyone from county council, county manager, county engineers, Pennies for Progress, who back then was a consultant, are all new faces. So what I'm about to say is he said, she said. I'm asking, I'm not here to point any fingers to anyone. All I ask is county to do the right thing. First, let me say, I've been involved with the, since 1995, the Riverview Road, when it was first talked about with the Cherry Road and the Riverview Road Project with City of Rock Hill. Back, back then, during Pennies One, Neil Welborn came to me and approached me and asked me if Riverview would be a good idea for Pennies for One. I said, yes, absolutely. If it helps us get our roads curbed and gutter and sidewalks and utilities underground, that would be perfect. And I said, would that be, would that be everything, everything that we're talking about would be included? He said, yes. So I said, okay. So when Pennies One came around, we were on the list of the 30-plus projects that were on that list that the first time around. We didn't make the cut the first time. We were number 26, 27 on that list, so that's why you didn't see us in Pennies One. Pennies Two came, and we got on Pennies Two Progress, and we were, I think, number 14 on that list. And then again, we get moved to Pennies Three because the project didn't get finished. I feel like, and I hate to use this term, but I feel like we're the redhead stepchild getting moved from project to project here, and and we're not getting done, and we're not, since 1995. Here are 2021. Back then, we had a meeting, and I've already talked to Patrick Hamilton, the person in charge of Pennies for Progress for some of this stuff that we've been going right before the meeting. But we had a meeting with Al Green, council member back then, Rick Lee, city officials, and CAPCO engineer at my hotel, where we showed the design and everything on the walls of what the project would look like. Three lanes, underground utilities, you know, everything that we were asking for would be there. And we were assured that that's what that will be, that's, we were assured that's what the project will be moving forward. And that was 19, or 2009. And we we were assured that since 1995 that this project would be the same way. Now, I think emails that date back to 2009, talking about the projects, the meetings, utilities being underground, at no time, and the owners are unfortunately can't be here, and of course, we're in the hospitality business, so we're short staffed at some places, so I apologize for them. But others, members of owners I've talked to in the last three or four days, so they're aware of what's going on. But at no time at any owner, and I asked the question, did you guys ever say, or did you hear from anybody that the utilities would be overground? They said, no, the utilities will always be underground, and that's what we were told to by the city and by the different meanings you'll get to hear in here in a second. But we've always been told the utilities would be buried underground with curb and gutter and sidewalks. Now, I don't know what the city and county officials came up back then, because there, whether it was a gentleman's agreement or something under, something else about underground utilities. I just know the owners were happy that the project was still moving forward and utilities were being underground, as well as the curb and sidewalks and everything that we were asking for. Now, moving forward, the original people are not here that were part of the project. So I I'm not sure, and I and I believe we've got lost in the shuffle what's been said and what hasn't been said in between between council then and to council now, let's just say that. With with that, I can prove, all I could do is present you some things that you have in front of you. One is in your package, May 16, 2011, city council approved the recommendation by county staff, utility location reimbursement policy for the proposed Pennies Three capital project and use tax program. Now, I don't know all the logistics on it, so as owners, we assumed that was taken care of all the projects that we need to get done for Riverview Road. August 11, 2000, voters passed Pennies Three, line item 12, a budget that's close to $8 million. So we assumed when that budget got passed, the owners, and this is us, assumed that all this Pennies project was also including utilities and so forth that are going underground. Number three, the Pennies for Progress website, I just pulled up, which is the number, the next item that you have in there. Pulled from the, under 2011 Pennies for Progress PDF, pulled it the other day. But it's already been budgeted. It's on the website, says it's been budgeted for $9.5 million. From my understanding, we're ready to go. This project has been in the works since 1995. It's funded, it's ready to go. Now, let's talk about the project, or the meetings in between there. Since 1995, again, we've been having stakeholder meetings with different entities all since 1995, that every meeting we've been to, it says we will be underground, utilities will be underground, curb and sidewalks will be the same. So I said, okay. August 2009, again, we talked about it. In your package, you have a meeting, 2010, where there was a meeting for Pennies for Progress. That was discussed again in that progress of when we were being looked at for road projects, that we would still be, on that list, our project would still be the same. In the package, you also have a meeting, April 22nd, I'm sorry, in your package, September 2011, we talked about the project utilities, landscape gutter, and also to make sure the project was still on the list, because we were in 2011, we were going to be on that list again for Pennies Three. We met with Phil Leiser in October 2011, talked about the project. Again, the project was still discussed, that we would be underground, curb, curb, sidewalks, everything that was, we talked about in the beginning. And then April 2nd, which is the big meeting, in your package with the stakeholders of Riverview Road, the meeting where the where the city of Rock Hill, the staff of York County, Patrick Hamilton was there, the drawlings were there, showing what the project would look like. Not one time that the owners felt like any anything would discuss with power being overhead. Everything was being discussed that it would be underground. So as of two months ago, all the easements, all the right-of-ways have been signed over with the city of Rock Hill to do all the project, oh, sorry, the, the underground utilities, because everything we signed with the city of Rock Hill, which we assume has already talked to the county in regards to this, is buried underground utilities. So I was just aware of about three weeks ago that the county council may be looking at not burying the power lines with the Pennies for Progress funding. So I'm not sure where, what's going on in regards to the county and the city. Patrick and I have talked, and he's sure that, he was told that by the city was burying the power lines, and, but this is the first he's heard about the overhead of power lines not being underground. Let me go back to the first page you got on your, in your handout. That is the actual market value of Riverview Road. That is what the value of every property on that road of this project is valued at. Now, the second number, $944,459.65, is the tax dollars that this road has paid in taxes for this past year. So what I'm getting out of this is, this project, in eight years, we've paid over $8 million in taxes. Our market value's gone up to $51 million. There's over 20 acres that still have to be developed on that road. I'm just asking county to make sure that they do the right thing. This is a return in their investment of helping the project do what it's supposed to do and return the, return your investment of parent, burying the power lines, because you're going to get a return on this, whether whether you do it or you don't do it, you're going to get a return, and you're going to continue getting a return on this. Like the projects you've done with what Patrick showed, that's awesome that, you know, he's saving money on different projects. But a lot of these projects are being funded in rural areas. There's no return on their investment. You got, we are, we're paying the one-cent sales tax to do the interchanges, updates, the road improvement updates, but our road is actually given, returned to you guys as county taxes, one-cent sales tax, and continuing to give toward the one-cent sales tax for Pennies for Progress. All I ask is that the county take a look and make sure they consider when they look at the Riverview Road project, that we fund what needs to get funded. Again, I'm not sure exactly how, but we, I want to make sure you guys are aware of where we're at as owners on Riverview Road and what you can do to help us to make sure that we achieve what we were said to us, start back in 1995.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. This time, I'll just make sure Patrick has all the information that you submitted up front, and any council members can ask questions of Mr. Hamilton after after the meeting. And if, Patrick, if you don't mind putting together a synopsis that you can provide to council, I'd appreciate that, too. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you. Thanks again, counsel.
At this time, do we have a motion for executive session?
We certainly do. Moving that we go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice, for litigation updates. Also regarding a contractual matter, Project Thistle One and Thistle Two. For the receipt of legal advice, another contractual matter regarding CHC insurance settlement proposal. Also for the receipt of legal advice, another contractual matter regarding request for settlement authority for county engineering project number 16245, tract 125. Also for the receipt of additional legal advice regarding Fort Mill School District's school impact fees. For the receipt of more legal advice regarding a proposed contractual matter, IGA for municipal inmates. Also regarding a personnel matter regarding a public information officer. Those are all the reasons to go into executive session.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will go into executive session. If members of the, in the room will be doing executive session here, so we'll need to clear out in five minutes. We'll take a five-minute break.
You okay?
Oh, my gosh.
She was trying to scare me, weren't you? That's all you was doing.
We went to one over in Hilton Head one day. It wasn't working. There was five of us in the entire theater.
We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Our first motion is relating to Project Thistle One. It is a motion to authorize management to amend purchase contract to include a provision for the placement of a conservation easement.
We have a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was waiting on them.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Second motion relates to Project Thistle Two. It is a motion to authorize management to make an offer of purchase.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
The third is a motion to approve settlement and authorize the CHM director to execute a release.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our fourth motion is to authorize settlement of engineering project number 16245, tract 125.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our last motion is to make the position of public information officer a non-classified position.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous and passes.
That was the last on my list. Motion to adjourn.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.